Vans that are running. We also had some ad alternates that were included in the invitation for bid. The these both revolved around technology. The first is for a device that would be able to record any motor vehicles that do not stop for the school bus. And it would be able to, we would be able to capture those license plates and be able to turn those over to the police so that we can make sure that our students are being safe while they're getting on and off the buses. The second is an electronic student ridership tracking system. And this would be some sort of an RFID tag where the student could come on swipe. And then we would know who is on and off the bus. It would allow us to track our numbers and it would also allow us to know if a student got onto the wrong bus. So as part of those ad alternates, we had both companies submit bids. And you can see that there are very large discrepancies between the two vendors. And RT in FY 2026 for ad alternate did bid $500 annually, whereas first student bid forty two thousand thirty four dollars. And the same is true with ad alternate two and RT bid fifteen hundred dollars for the first year and first student bid ten thousand seven hundred and thirty two dollars. So there are a few options when it comes to this bid. The first one is to accept the lowest bid that was submitted and that would be NRT. The pros to that is with this, the process is complete. We have our FY twenty six budget amount. The cons are the impact to the FY twenty six budgets in all three districts. And then also, we would have the same transportation company with some of the remaining quality concerns that we have. And then down here, we have a footnote. We would also propose under this option that we would engage transportation consultants to assess our transportation so that we can look forward to FY twenty nine and beyond. Since this bid is also a three year contract with two one year options, we would be able to look forward three years out to see if there was another route that we wanted to take, no pun intended. And then option two would be to negotiate with the lowest bidder. Under chapter thirty B, we are able to conduct negotiations with the lowest bidder. This would allow us to hopefully lessen the impacts to the FY twenty six budget. The con is that we cannot change any of the bid specifications as part of those negotiations. So we would really only be negotiating on the daily rate. There's always a chance that potential negotiations would not be successful. And again, we would have the same transportation company with quality concerns. Greg?
We already negotiated with the lowest bidder and there is no change to the price.
Okay, and then option three would be to reject all all NRT's bid and then to contract with first student. We could, if we so determined, determine that NRT is a non-responsive bidder. And the pros to that would be is again, the process is complete and we know our budget amount and that we would have a new transportation vendor. The con would be the significant impacts to the FY twenty six budgets. And another con would be a new transportation vendor because we do not know what we will get with a new vendor and we would also have to learn all new systems. And then the last option is that we reject all bids and we reissue the invitation for bids. The pros would be that we would be able to change the bid specifications to achieve any savings. It may gave us that give us the potential for more competitive bids from other vendors if we change some of these specifications. The cons is is that then it extends the process and our FY twenty six budget amounts would still be unknowns. There's always a potential that bids may come in higher and there's also a potential that no bids are received. It would be our recommendation if we were to go this route, that we revise the language on the substitute drivers and the vehicle age of the buses. And I would also note, and I didn't point this out on the other options, I think with all of these options, we really want to engage a transportation consultant to assess our transportation moving forward. Greg, did you have anything that you else you wanted to add?
Becky, can I ask a question or do I have to wait till the end?
I'm at the end, so there we go.
I would, there's going to be a ton of questions and I can imagine they're going to be different by committee. So I was thinking once Greg and Becky were done, we could go by 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 committee to ask their questions and then we could all reassemble, you know, our general questions. So so Greg and Becky, do you have any anything more to add?
So the only thing I will add is that in our negotiation with the lowest bidder, two items that raised the overall cost were the dedicated for substitute drivers and the age of the vehicle, less than five years and no more than sixty thousand miles. So those were the two cost factors among a few others. And again, that is why if we did go out for bid again, declined all bids, then that is language we would recommend changing and in the bid specifications.
Okay, so being a Zoom webinar and not being able to see everybody, if you do have a question, if you could, you know, raise your hand down bottom, pop that up and then we'll be able to see who who has questions. And unless anyone objects, I think I'll start with the region to ask questions and go with John. John, go ahead and ask your question. Then we can go, we'll go Southborough or Northborough last, if that's all right.
So first of all, thank you Becky and Greg and presumably Keith for putting this together. This is very well organized and very clear from a financial perspective. I guess I don't necessarily want to scrutinize that. The one overall question which I believe applies to all three committees and really applies to the entire district overall is when we talk about an evaluate, when a consultant to evaluate, is it just on cost or is it on quality? And the reason why I bring that up is because I appreciate the fact that we're going to have live cameras. I think that would be something very important for parents to know. But I mean, overall, I guess I want to ensure that we have quality, not just from a the buses get there on time, but a safety, et cetera. And I don't necessarily see that in the presentation. And while I didn't scrutinize the entire contract, I guess I want to make sure that as we are signing a new deal and committing to a new to a vendor for a period of time that we are all very, very comfortable and we as a committee members, when we're addressed and, you know, challenged in the public about sort of, hey, my bus is late, you know, this driver is never here, that changes all the time. I guess to be able to have that assurance that the new the new vendor that we're choosing is we're overseeing them and that we have recourse if they don't, you know, not just get there on time, but get there safely, et cetera. So that's a kind of long-winded sort of rambling question, but I guess I really want to make sure that we're comfortable with with that aspect of a new contract signing.
So I'll answer the question regarding the consultant. So the consultant would be to analyze the cost benefit analysis of bringing transportation in-house after this three-year contract. So the consultant would focus on, you know, what would it take? What would a cost investment be? Would be the pros and cons of, again, standing up a north pro-south pro-transportation department in terms of quality control. I think that is built into the specifications and up to the district internally to be able to make sure we're holding whatever contract that we agree to, that they're following the contract. So I think that is something that I think internally Keith can speak to, but it is an internal management piece and accountability piece.
And I will add, we have included penalties, financial penalties in this for performance issues. There are various levels of violations. And so that is something that we continue to track with them and will do so if they are the selected vendor for next year.
Going through the region, we have Jen and Paul then Chris. So Jen?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. So first, I guess that my my first question was with NRT, have we used, have we had that in the past where we've like asked for money back or penalties based on their poor performance? So that's my first question. I guess I'll pause there and let that be answered and I have another question.
Yes, we have in the past. So I mentioned the fact that we had a fuel escalation clause in our contract and that the fuel prices were set as of July twenty twenty. If you remember, that was at the height of the pandemic and fuel prices were probably at the lowest prices that they had been in a while. And so we had mutually agreed with NRT that we they would waive the fuel escalation cost, which in FY twenty three was about seventy five thousand dollars for any penalties to be assessed to them. However, and Keith can probably speak to this better because he's the one that maintains the tracking spreadsheet. We do track any violations and maintain that on a regular basis.
Thank you. And then my second question, what do we know about the other company? Like, are any district, do we know other districts that are using them? And the second part of that second question is, are we able to negotiate with them too or we can only negotiate with the lowest bidder?
We can only negotiate with the lowest bidder. And in terms of other districts, I know Hudson does use first student. I believe Lemonster uses first student. We have not checked on any references just because they were not the lowest bidder as of yet. However, I know that they are, they're a nationwide company, but I do know there are local districts that use them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Paul?
I just had a question about the the age of the vehicles that that did kind of stick out for me. So I was wondering how you arrived at the decision to include that language about the age of the vehicles? And can you talk a little more about the feedback that you got on that aspect of the proposal?
Keith, do you want to take that one?
Sure. So Paul, as we analyze a lot of the different IFBs that were out there, it was a variation anywhere between five years and 10 years on the age of the buses that we saw. And the mileage was sometimes included and sometimes not. So we really wanted to mitigate potentially any management issues and get the best and hopefully the safest vehicles in our in our district. So that is, that is why we landed on that. We had gone back and forth on that particular item a lot and wanted to make sure that we put that best foot forward. We also saw some that were even less than than five years, which we thought was too aggressive. So we were definitely, I would say, a little bit more on the aggressive side than than most as they varied anywhere between five and the ten ten year mark.
And what about Greg had mentioned, if we do want to reissue the bid, that that was the language we're going to look at. So I think he said you had gotten some feedback on that. Can you talk a little more about that?
Right, so part of when we had discussed that, the the price increase, the the age of the bus, because it was five years versus, let's say, a ten year, that was something that did oppose. Becky, do you have the exact percentage there? I was trying to find that document. Do you have that ready?
I do. So we had read, one of the things that we had done when we reached out to them is both Marlboro and Westboro have both gone out to bid in over the past few months. And there the pricing that they received was one hundred dollars less per on their daily rate than what we we received. And so we asked for more clarification from NRT as to what the difference was. And that was one of the areas that they highlighted for us. And they said of that one hundred dollar difference that the vehicle age is approximately nineteen percent of that, the reason why our bid price was higher than theirs. So they they're saying that most of the other bids that they see are 10 years and one hundred and thirty thousand miles. And that's what both Marlboro and Westboro had in their bid specifications.
And we're not allowed to just negotiate that with NRT? We have to just reissue the bid entirely?
Exactly, because that was part of the bid specifications. And we did clarify that with our legal counsel a couple of times. I was hoping for a different answer, but didn't happen.
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Do do either of the contracts allow for or have language in there to make sure that there's busing for after-school activities like athletics and things like that? Or is that handled separately?
It does include our athletic transportation as well.
Thanks.
And Chris, to answer that, therefore, it would be subject to the penalties.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Matt?
Curiosity question, since it was mentioned about substitute drivers being part of the reason for the increase in rates. Do you have any, how are you going to measure whether or not those substitute drivers are available on a daily basis if they're not needed?
Yeah, Matt, so I think what would be true with that is that I did look back at the three year, last three year performance of of NRT when it came to providing the thirty two drivers needed daily. You know, and on average, our days would be minus two drivers and sometimes all the way up to six. So we wanted to split the difference and make sure that on the average days, we were able to, you know, cover all the routes that we had. So what I anticipate doing, if that clause is maintained, is to do spot checks, not only on a daily basis, but to make sure that those drivers are in place and ready to go. My also, my impression of or what we're asking for is not just because of a driver calls out, but if there is a mechanical issue that we could have one of those drivers deployed to make sure that there's no interruption to service to the the following tier. So there's a couple of benefits that that could gain, but I would imagine that that's going to be part of my management and management of the contract.
So in terms of the hundred dollar increase over Westboro, twenty six percent of that hundred dollars was as a result of the four dedicated substitute drivers.
See no more hands from the region. How about South Borough Committee?
Does any Kamali?
Ollie? Or Chelsea, you want to you want to run this one?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Chelsea.
Go ahead.
There are a couple of questions, so. Well, first I'll start with a comment. It almost feels like this should not be legal to like have such a huge hike in cost for educational purposes of transporting kids safely. And I I wouldn't be surprised if other school districts are facing the same challenge. And, you know, I just, it just really alarming that this is something that we're all trying to negotiate here. So for option three, one of the cons was if there are no bids, is that 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 we that we get no bids? What is the contingency if none of them? It seems like there are two now, but and there are maybe someone lingering in the winds, but what is the contingency if there are no responses? Is the current company required to stick with us until we have a response from someone?
No, our contract with NRT does end as of June thirtieth of this year. I would say the contingency would be that we would then have to reissue a second bid. However, I think it is highly unlikely that we would not receive bids, at least one bid. But something to keep in the back of our minds.
And then there was one other question around, I guess we don't get reimbursed for transportation if the said student lives less than a mile or less than a mile away. Is there any way that that can be discussed, especially in our communities where oftentimes there's no sidewalks? There's, it's just not a safe way that we can, other than a parent transporting them, which, you know, suppose they are, they don't have a guardian that drives or, you know. Yeah.
So just a point of clarification, the reimbursement is only at the region, so it's only the high school that receives the regional transportation reimbursement so that the K through eights, the North Borough and South Borough K through eights do not receive reimbursement for transportation. But in terms of changing that, that is mass general law. That would require a change of the one and a half mile.
Kamali, we do not, we do not, you know, we do pick up all students.
Yes.
Regardless of whether or not they live within that mile and a half distance, the school committee can charge if it chose to in all three districts with except all two districts, with the exception of the region.
Well, could you charge for that mile and a half?
In Northborough?
No, for the region, could you? No.
Yeah, if that came before me, that it wouldn't pass. Then Chelsea, I guess this is my comment is around option one. It just really feels like we're giving a raise to the firm that we have so many challenges with. So I would support us adjusting the current requested bid to see if the cost can be, look like something more than the percentage increases that are showing now.
Thank you, Kamali. Roger?
Couple of things, three or four things. So did this, so did this contract start what one year before COVID or two years or about the same? When did this start, you know, related to when we kind of changed our our whole attendance situation?
So it did start on July first of twenty twenty. We actually went out to bid in, I think it was February of twenty twenty. It was right before COVID. And then I we made the start time change two years later, one year later.
One year.
Okay.
Okay, so this, the first year of this contract was really the first COVID year then, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And, okay.
I think it's important, an important point, Roger, that the contract was negotiated pre-COVID.
Right.
And we've had a very favorable financial contract with NRT for the past five years.
Fair point, and let me, let me follow on that then. So one of the things I, and I realize that the the percentage increase over where we are finishing right now for both of these bids is significant. I tend to think that, I mean, I'm thinking about it compared to what the CPI would have put this contract at because realistically, yes, the district negotiated a great deal, however it was done, but I don't know that we can expect that that we can use that as the baseline to go forward. People can look at this any way they want, but I'm looking at it, I'm looking at comparative figure more as, all right, what would the CP, what was that CPI number? And I'm kind of looking at that as the starting point. I don't know if you want to answer this, Greg, and if I understand, I understand if maybe you don't at this point. I I imagine that at some point in time, the district has a point of view in this situation. They've spent a lot of time, you've spent a lot of time looking at this. And I'd be very interested in in kind of what your point of view is, but I also understand if you don't want to put that out there until you hear the rest of the school committee discussion. So you want to put it out there or not?
Sure, I'd I'd be happy to.
Okay.
No matter who we contract with, quality of service to students and families needs to be a priority. So no matter who we award the contract to, that needs to be non-negotiable. We are seeing significant increases with both contracts. We need to hold whoever we contract with accountable to a high level of service and we need to do a better job as a district doing that.
All right, well, let me, let me comment on that then. So there's no guarantee in quality of service and we all know that, right? We all deal with service companies every day. You know, we put, you know, service level agreements in these contracts, we put penalties in to the degree that we can. I haven't looked at, I haven't read the the current contract, so I'm, but I'm sure that whatever the the penalties are, it probably doesn't necessarily make up for as 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 much effort as we can put into creating these. It doesn't really make up for poor quality of service if we don't get it. And now I'm going to cycle back to that, but there's no guarantee we're going to get it. So and I don't use this term disrespectfully because I know this is a public meeting. But the phrase, the devil you know, okay, probably comes to my mind, especially, and I think I can't think of a better, better way to put it, but maybe there should be a better way to put it. Since we definitely had some service problems with NRT, we don't have any idea what we're in for with the new company. Problems could be the same, it could be, we could have a better situation, we could have a worse situation. I don't know. Is there, if we, I don't know how strongly the district feels about the 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 requirements on the age of the buses. Sounds like that's a significant decrease in the price. If we were willing to put up with older buses, I just don't know. I'd have to defer to people that know much more about this than I do, whether a seven year old bus is a really risky situation compared to a. Um, whether a seven-year-old bus is a really risky situation compared to a five-year-old bus or an eight-year-old bus is or a ten-year-old, but I just don't know. But clearly, the dollars uh twenty percent, right? That's not a small number. And but I'm sure that you thought about this, um, at least at some length before you put that requirement in there. Um, but if for some reason you felt that, especially looking at some of the um the neighboring towns and what their bid spec was and the pricing they got back, if you felt that some, that for some reason you wanted to rethink that. Uh, obviously, we can't change it, as you said, because the way the bid was structured, it's it's out there. Is there a um a- and and I know, Becky, you said that, well, we don't worry, we will get a bid somehow or other. Is there a, is there a friendly conversation that can be held with the um, again, procurement policy? Um, with the with the bidders to say, look, we're 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 gonna put it out there again, but the reason we're putting out there is because we need to change one of the specs. Okay, which is, which is clearly going to affect the economics of this. Uh, and not and not basically quote, drive them away by saying, I'm sorry, we're we're throwing this out and we're gonna do it again. Is that is that inappropriate conversation to have with these bidders or 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 not? I'm back into procurement policy here.
No, we can, we can, if we decide to reject all bids, we can let the bidders know and we can have conversations with them about what factored into our um our decision. Um, the only time we really can't engage in conversations is during like the actual, like when they're preparing the bids. Um, it's, that's very um formulaic and we have to make sure that we're abiding by those policies. Um, but yes, it's fine to have conversations kind of before and after the the bid process.
Yeah, I note that those add-on items, where that pricing difference was significant between at least the two bidders so far. Last question, and everybody's kind of going, thank goodness. Um, so it's two parts, though. Becky, when when you, when you put the graph up and you you and you showed the forty-one, I think it was a forty-one percent decrease um, or the chart up, I I just missed it. And I understand that, I understand that the first, the first year really is a is a pretty significant jump because of where we are right now, having, you know, having benefited from a excellent pricing price on the contract so far. So um, I I guess I didn't quite understand that, but related to this, I I know that the regional transportation reimbursement is directed at I I heard you say it's directed to region. Is that blended into the overall price of the buses? So the K through eight uh districts get some benefit out of a blended price as a result of that reimbursement that comes to the region, or did I miss something there?
Um, there is a benefit to the to the K through eights in that we are sharing in that daily rate.
Okay, so, so, so it uh, it it flows through?
Yes, yeah. So indirectly benefits the the K through eights.
All right, and you notice I didn't worry about the fact you were trying to explain the minus forty-one percent to me. At some point in time, I'll figure that out, I guess, but so here's the, here's the, here's the last part of this question. So we tried to negotiate price with the lowest bidder. And that was a, that was a, you know, that was a, that was a stop right there. We we didn't go any further. Um, be- because they wouldn't. So if we is, if we had a contract that was a tiered contract, which is, all right, the first year price is but right now, it's the first year price is A, and then it's, then it's, then the next year is is A plus three percent, and the next year is is A plus six percent or whatever it is, three percent each year. But if we had a first year price of A minus something, because we're not really going to get much, we we're gonna get a lower regional reimbursement, transportation reimbursement, because we're basing it on the previous year. So i- is there any, would any, would would the bidders bid uh kind of a different tiered system where the fact that we're not really get taking advantage of what we could be taking advantage of if we were, if we were driving the transportation reimbursement off of a number that wasn't quite so much smaller, do you know where I'm going here? Wasn't quite much smaller than than the starting year.
Yeah, so we, so the first priority is to negotiate the lowest cost.
Right.
Once we negotiate the lowest cost, then we would negotiate with the lowest bidder on, is there any flexibility to amortize the increase over a three-year period? So to your point, Roger, rather than saying a fifty percent increase in year one and a three percent increase in year two and three, is there an option to say to take that fifty percent increase, minimize the impact of year one and spread out the impact over years two and three? So that's a separate negotiation.
Okay, okay.
Once we, once we have um identified the lowest bidder.
Fair enough. All right, so I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Alan?
Um, just looking um, looking towards like the, just a question about the contract um in terms of the routes. So what's, what's the language in terms of like final ownership? Like if the, if the uh company were to say, well, this is your route, and we disagreed with it. Um, who has the final say there?
Keith, do you want to speak to that?
I'm trying to find the exact language, but um.
It's it's a partnership, so does speak of a partnership. We have the right to um do routing. We have the right to ask them to do routing. Um, so it is, it is a partnership, I think. Having the routes internal allow us the maximum flexibility for any adjustments. Um, but again, the lowest bidder, if they routed for us, we would need to have some agreements around what what's the change process? What's the timeline process? What's the review process of a request to change?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would just, so two things is like, obviously, you know, with all the work that, and maybe this is a South Borough centric thing, but it's all the work that we've done this past year to get bus uh timing down. If, you know, ultimately, the provider is resistant to changing a, you know, changing a route because whatever, it's better for them if it's not, if if it's then I would want, I would want to sort of understand like, is, you know, could we say, well, look, this is our, we're the owners of the decision, therefore you need to do it, or if that is going to be, if we feel like that's going to be burdensome, retain that in-house. And then I guess my my final point with that is that if we are going to rebid, and there is a thought that that not making that part of the bid would also save money, just because, you know, we're not asking them to do additional work. So I would think that it potentially would. Um, although I know it's not a, so it's just a one-time thing, hopefully. Um, then, you know, I I would be supportive of of removing that too, potentially. Obviously, Keith, I'm sure that's a lot, it is a lot of internal work, but just a thought.
Thanks, Alan. Laura?
Um, just like two, can everyone hear me? Yeah, okay. Just two uh quick comments. I'm just wondering, um, I guess, I think Keith, this might be the best question for you. I know, you know, of course, in the beginning of the year, there was, um, you know, some parents that had some, had some initial concerns, just generally about like various issues with the buses. Just from your perspective, do you feel that um, you know, regardless of which, what contract I uh ends up being our final one, do you feel that um the new um bid that was structured will adequately address like what those primary concerns were amongst parents in terms of like, you know, you consolidated all that feedback and we're sort of, um, you know, going through all that commentary? Do you feel that these are really going to address like some of those biggest issues that we had had, regardless of who it ends up being?
I do. I mean, that was part of the research that we did to make sure that the specifications did, you know, increase uh the expectations for performance. Uh, that is uh throughout the document, so I I do feel that the new contract with the specifications that we've outlined, you know, would definitely address um all of the concerns that I've heard and not just from this past fall, but also for the last, you know, three years of poor performance um that we had. So it was really a combination of everything, Lauren, but I do feel that that was the thing we did have control over. I think it's been mentioned a couple of times, we, you know, with different types of service contracts, but the quality of the contract that we're putting out in the bid that we put out definitely addressed all the things that uh, you know, we would want to see with a new contract.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
And can I just go back to Alan's question about the routing too? I just found the language and it does say that all routes have to be approved annually by the superintendent. Um, and that the contractor does need to provide us those routes six weeks in advance. Um, and that it is our ultimate decision um as to what the routes look like.
I just had to that comment. So in the past, we have had bus contractors route for us. And we did experience challenges when we went to change a route. Um, the time it took, the responsiveness, the communication, so it is something, then in addition to, yes, we approve the day-to-day change orders that do arrive are not going to be um, customers are not going to see the same responsiveness that they see from Sheila Hannah and Keith Lefoy.
I think we're up with uh North Borough, Kelly?
Sorry, can I just go?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Chelsea.
It's okay. Um, Keith, do we have data on buses breaking down and the age of those buses?
Uh, we do have the data on uh when the buses have broken down, and we do have the data uh on the age of the buses.
Okay, I think that'd be helpful if we could circulate that in some form. Um, and I know we have financial clauses in our current contract, but unfortunately, that doesn't help the people who are standing at the bus stop and the bus doesn't come for those kids. So I appreciate the fact that we have the ability to hold um some finances back, but I don't think, I don't think it's acceptable. Um, especially back to Kamali's point about the fact that these, these companies are supposed to get our kids to school safely, and I think that's the most important point here, and, you know, having kids stand on a street corner waiting and not knowing if it's coming is not acceptable to me. Um, I understand that we're having a market rate and out, you know, a market adjustment here, and that we went out to bid pre-COVID, and obviously, this entire industry has shifted um in the last five years, and we're obviously seeing the ramifications of that now. Um, but I'm having a hard time having this percentage increase um with the current company that we have, and we've had extremely poor service, at least on the South Borough side, in the last eighteen months. Um, so um, if we were to look to do a second uh to reject all bids and go back out to bid, my question would be, could we do it um with all three districts together? And in parallel to that, do um bids for each district individually, just to see what if anything, if the landscape has, landscape has changed in the last five years since we went out to bid?
So I will mention um that the last time we went out to bid in twenty twenty, um, that is actually how we structured the bids. Um, where we had um two options for bidders, where they could bid for the entire contract, all three districts. And then we also broke it out so that they could bid for each of the individual districts, if they chose to bid for just South Borough and not the other two, they could do that. Um, we had the same two companies um bid at that time, NRT and First Student. They both bid on the combined contract and did not bid on the individual contracts. Um, however, that's not to say that things might not be different this time. Greg, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that.
No, it's definitely something we could do. I'm, you know, just looking in terms of one of the benefits of having North Borough, South Borough and the region together is that you're cost-sharing the average cost per bus. So if you were to go out to bid individually, that five hundred plus dollar per bus, that cost would be assumed by the single district. So that is, that is one of the differences, one of the impact, if if each district were to independently go out and bid con, bid uh transportation services, but it doesn't, doesn't preclude us from going, you know, and bidding both ways and seeing what we receive.
Thank you. Sean, we're good on South Borough. Thank you.
So sorry. All right, Kelly?
Um, well, I'll just start because um mine partly was kind of what Chelsea was saying about the age of buses. Um, example, today we had North Borough bus break down, so I was just curious about the age of that bus and um those statistics for that. So I think that would be helpful too to know um for the future. And then my only other second question was um, for the slide that had the add alternative ways, um, add alternatives, there was like a drastic difference between NRT and the First Student. Do we know why that's such a drastic difference? Do you think it's just kind of like, it's one of those types of things, like sometimes people bid high if they're not really that interested in it? Or or are they low bidding that makes us go with them and then we're not gonna get?
It's a capital investment that they don't currently have.
So I think that based on the data that we have across the state.
Yeah.
The second bidder would be one of the most expensive providers.
In general.
Her bus that we've, that we've um heard about.
Okay. So the the lower, the lower bid from NRT, is that practical? Or is that like a lowball? Do we know? We don't know.
We don't know.
Okay. All right, um, I will open it up to the rest of the committee. Bryce?
Thank you. Um, so now I might have a couple of questions tucked in here, but mostly I think what you may be realizing now, what you may not have known when you drafted the bid, is that you actually put out a pretty restrictive proposal or your request, like i- i- in essence, right? Because you added essentially four FTEs, almost four and a half FTEs, if I think about the the dispatcher that you asked to lump in there in addition to a dramatic increase in in a capital asset being new vehicles. So I guess, were you aware of that when you went out, that that was pretty different than what other folks had bid?
Um, as Keith said, on the age of the bus, we did see a a wide range. Um, so we did not think that we were that far off. Um, we were looking at, um, and and I'll let Keith speak to this um more, just because he's in the trenches dealing with it, but um, we were looking at our our most recent, I think, performance with NRT. And the fact that they have had um substitutes available and that has improved the quality this year. Keith, do you want to elaborate on that?
I I would. So Bryce, the way that the current system works and it was a part of the prior contract is that there would be a cadre of subs that was available uh for all of the districts that are serviced out of their Hudson dispatch. So there were six different towns that were part of that dispatch, and on any given day they would only have four substitute spare drivers available for all six towns. That when we were at.
You're asking for them specifically for us. I think I understand the distribution and then the consolidation. So like, I I just mean like that, you're adding expenses to them.
So Bryce, I think the short answer to your question is, if we were to go back in time, would we bid it for more flexibility? Yes.
So I think that just brings me to my point and and to Roger's point earlier, like if you think of the, sorry, give it the shit. If you think of the adjusted rate at the four oh seven, which is what Roger was pointing to, that we had such a great deal. And the percentages that you associated with that labor was twenty-six percent of that delta between the CPI and the new price. And then you described the buses, the bus restrictions as twenty percent of that delta between the four oh seven and the five forty-five. Right? So like, I think we do have to get ourselves comfortable with. Right? So like, I think we do have to get ourselves comfortable with a rate increase. But that rate increase shouldn't be, I think, as dramatic as what your proposal describes. And I do, I am highly confident that if you put in a bid closer to what a Westborough put in, you're gonna have probably an extra bid because it's gonna be a more competitive marketplace for other folks to join in. NRT might still be the winner, but I think you have to decline these and go back out at this point.
Yeah. So the only option right now we have is to accept the lowest bid. Or, um, accept the second, you know, decline the lowest bid, give a reason why, accept the second highest bidder. Or the second bid first, or decline all bids so that we, we can, we could adjust um, the bid specifications. We can't go to NRT and say, can you, you know, what if we, you know, lessen the age of the buses? The only way we-
Think you can decline and, and redraft and go back out and I'll stop, I'll stop there so other folks can chime in. Thanks.
I don't know if Joan or Lauren have anything?
Yeah, I did have a question, um, and I don't even know if you can really answer this. So I'm curious, you know, if we were to go out to bid again. Um, I'm just curious what type, I guess what the supply and demand for buses is and how that works. Because it's sort of seeming like the same districts are receiving bids from the same transportation companies year after year or contract after contract. Uh, I mean, companies don't have unlimited bus fleets, so they can't be putting in bids to, you know, dozens of, of, um, uh, districts. So how does that play into our decision here?
I think that, you know, we, we operate within a system. You know, the system is governed by mass general law. I think that for most transportation companies, they're not looking to expand for a variety of reasons, include, one including the labor market. Um, so I, I think that, you know, we're operating in a system where we can expect one or two bidders on transportation contracts and, and across the Commonwealth. We're not seeing districts where they're getting three, four or five bids on transportation. So I think part of the work of the committees is to advocate for a different system. Which is governed by, you know, mass general law. Um, it precludes us from partnering with, with other towns. You know, we can't, we can't partner with Westborough and Hudson and say, let's, let's combine and then let's, let's bid on the transportation together. So there's some restrictions that we have. So we, we're working in a system. The decision that we have to make is difficult because there is a system behind it.
So I think unless, uh, do other people have any other questions? Uh, any of the other committees that already spoke, any, anything that popped up there? I don't see any hands. So I think at this time, we, we need to provide some direction to the administration as to where we want to go. We, I heard, I heard Bryce, you know, give some opinions, um, and some suggestions. So.
I think my, I would make a motion to reject all bids.
So we-
Go out.
So we, Kelly, Kelly has made a motion for Northborough. We would need to do this for each, each committee or um, or it would be complicated.
Point of clarification too.
Yep.
Any, any one committee that rejects the bids, rejects it for everyone. So unless all three committees agree with the decision, um, one negative, um, rejection by a committee is rejecting it for all.
But all three committees would still need to make a motion.
I think it, it's irrelevant. Yes, I think it's part of a-
So, so that we can have, um, the roll call votes.
I think if you put a motion on the table and then ask for discussion, I think that's probably the-
Yeah. So, so Kelly has made a motion to, uh, reject all bids.
Second for Northborough.
And a second from Joan. I see Roger.
Well, let me just, I'm making sure, I was gonna suggest that we just have Northborough take their vote. I mean, if, if Northborough votes in favor of rejecting all bids, situation is kind of over and we can, we can do, you know, some ceremonial votes after that, but let's-
The only, the only, the only thing I'm, I'm thinking of is, is once motions are made, then we have time for discussion. So if there's any concern about, about it, if they, if they move and vote, they're the only ones having the discussion about, about it. And I was, um, hoping to, to have that discussion.
Um, um, Chelsea, can I go?
Go, Kamali.
Um, Sean, I was just gonna say, as part of this open discussion, um, can you take a, um, like a straw poll to see where, uh, you know, voices land on this, um, before each of the committees go around and make formal motions and open discussion again?
I'm smiling because I don't have like, uh, Robert's Rules of Order for Dummies in front of me. I think I, I don't know, I can take a straw poll.
Yeah, I think that the recommendation is, to my recommendation is for Robert's Rules, is each committee should make a motion. Which then allows for discussion to surface each member's opinions. And then at that point, Northborough or whatever processed could, could vote. And again, if any one committee declines or rejects the bid, then, then that's it.
And, and North, and Southborough and the region, they don't have to make the same motion I made. They could make it to accept. For all they, you know what I mean? They could make, you guys could make it to accept option one if somebody wanted to. And then because, just because I made a motion and we have a second doesn't necessarily mean we would still win that. You know what I mean? Like you could still reject it. So.
So Roger's hands up.
Well, I'll make a motion for Southborough to reject all bids.
Okay, there's, who was, who was the second?
Chelsea.
Okay.
And Greg, can we just bring Jen Primack over? She got kicked out of the Zoom. Please thank you.
Region?
Paul?
I'm, I'll move that we reject all bids.
And is there a second?
Second.
Is that John?
That's Chris.
Chris. Okay. Um, so now discussion. Paul, Paul, your, your hand's still up.
Yeah, um, I was just, in addition to rejecting all bids, I do like the idea of engaging a consultant to help us with this. You know, I'm sure such a person could help us, you know, get to a number on age of buses, mileage. And, you know, on, on the question of substitutes, whether, you know, is that a good idea? What number is a good idea? All those sorts of things. So.
Are you saying a consultant prior to rebidding? Or are you saying a consultant for the next 2029?
Prior to rebidding this year.
And Greg, was that part of the, um, thought process?
A consultant that we were looking at was to work with us over the next three years to, again, do the cost benefit analysis of standing up around transportation internally. And it was not to, I mean, again, you, you can hire a consultant to help draft, um, bid specifications. Um, but that's not the, that was not the intention of the consultant that we were speaking of.
Right. The consultant was to look at moving transportation in-house at some future period of time. Yeah.
Uh, okay, but would, wouldn't there be some, so wouldn't there be some value though? And I mean, we do have questions around, around these issues. So I would think such a person could help.
Yeah, I think we have a couple of partners, um, firms that we've worked with in the past who've helped us with the start time analyzing our transportation. I'm sure we could reach out to, uh, one of our partners and get some, um, good data around what they would recommend.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry. Matt?
So this might end up being a question, but, um, and it's, I think it builds on, uh, the commentary that Bryce made about kind of what is driving the increase of the cost. And it seems like when I came into this meeting, I was thinking that a big driver of this was gonna be just the fact that the, the costs were higher based upon the bids that we received, given the marketplace, which was surprising to me. But it does also seem that it's a, really a function of the fact that we asked for more in the bid between the substitutes, the dispatch and better quality of buses, all of which could potentially address the performance issues. And I just felt like, I'm just feeling now, less of a question, more of an opportunity to just speak to, does this contract position us better to provide better service of busing to the community? And if it does, maybe that is a reason for for approving the budget or approving the contracts as they are. But I can certainly understand why the, the committee members are feeling the way they are at the moment.
Bryce?
Yeah, I think to Matt's point, like there's nothing in this description that guarantees any elevation in quality to me, regardless of year of bus or amount of backup drivers, um, to that extent. I mean, I see the argument there. I understand we had the distribution. It'd be nice to have a couple really isolated folks to us. And I think asking for that is right. So it may not be four, maybe it's two, right? So if, if twenty-six percent is the increase for four and you can get that down to thirteen, that's something we can probably talk about feeling like that gives us a bench to pull from. That's tangible versus, I don't know, it feels like a lot of guesses at what elevated service might feel like. Um, I think that that's the part that may be a little heartbreaking in this for the folks who have been experiencing that in our community is to go back to them and feel like we're giving them bad news about paying more for the same thing we don't like. But, yeah.
Thank you. Kelly?
So I think, um, my idea behind rejecting the bids is that it is a, it is a huge percentage increase. And with the way that the, the law is written and everything, we can't adjust those things now that we know that those are the things that, you know, caused a potential increase. So the only way to potentially get those down would be to rebid it out. Um, you know, redraft it and rebid it out. Um, you know, I definitely think that some of the stuff though, like I think is important. As I said about, you know, the bus age and the bus breakdown, you know, those, those are, you know, important that, you know, I don't know if we want to necessarily like, get rid of that part or whatever, but at least we have the opportunity to know what other districts have done that have reduced the cost slightly and see if any of those numbers would help our bottom line.
Thank you. Matt, your hand's still up. Did you wanna add?
I did not. That's my fault. Thank you for asking.
Okay. Um, I don't see any other hands up. I would, I'll just add in, um, I, I, I appreciate Bryce's point about like going to the community for, for more money for the same service is, is, is a tough ask. And I think, um, particularly in this budget climate, I think we owe it to, uh, the students and to the community to see if we can do something different to, to, um, get a better, um, contract. Recognizing there is gonna be an increase and, and that's, that's a tough, uh, tough place to be anyways. But I think, um, I think we owe it to, um, the community to do that. Lauren?
Um, could, could someone just clarify if we were to reject these bids and then, um, come out with a new proposal, um, what the differences would be? Like what, what specifically would we change?
Thank you.
So the two areas are the, the potentially, you know, again, working with potentially one of our uh, past partners in transportation, changing the age of the bus and the mileage. So that would be one change. The second would be the number of dedicated drivers, substitute drivers. Um, so those are the two areas. So that, those are the two areas we received feedback around why was the, the increase per bus, um, different from, you know, Marlboro, Westboro, um, compared to what we bid.
And do you have any ideas specifically? I know what we requested originally for substitute bus drivers. Would we reduce that to one, two, three?
So I think we would probably write the bid specifications to know how much one would cost. And with the ability to add others, uh, upon request.
And maybe structure it like an ad alternate, like we did with the technology.
Okay. I think that my, um, I think that I'm, I'm waffling a bit. In that, you know, the things that we asked for in our proposal are the things that we really um, value for the quality of service for our students. But it also feels like such a high percentage increase. That it, it just, it, it's a hard decision to make. Is it worth spending the money for all these additional services that we want to try to ensure this quality? I just, I guess my, my, my hesitation and just rejecting and then lowering our ask is I don't want that quality to be reduced substantially. Um, I guess that's my worry.
Just a general comment to Lauren. I think that those are the two areas we need to look more closely at. So I, I think five, you know, five years, sixty thousand miles is very restrictive. So that again, I'd love to get more feedback from a consultant around what is the right ask. And secondly, in all three districts, this transportation increases and is creating tension on all three of the FY twenty-six budgets. Um, so this is, I think it behooves um, the committees to try to get the best price and the best quality of service. Um, moving forward and I don't, I, in my opinion, where we stand with the contracts, I don't think we're there yet.
Molly?
Um, Lauren, I would go another step, which is that I would give the administration even more leeway to remove, reduce, or kind of do that alternate, uh, option for some of the technical things that we've asked for as improvements. Because, um, if it's going to be incrementally different in the, um, in the cost, um, that they propose. So if it's just nominal difference that, you know, you give, that you provide, uh, tracking, then give it to me, right? But if it is, you're telling me that we're basically, um, you're going to increase our cost, you know, fifty, sixty percent to base, to allow you to purchase all of that, to rebuild your buses for that, when we could do it on our own for a twenty percent or ten percent charge, let's do it on our own. Um, so that's one little, I'm totally on board with you, Lauren, in that I don't want to reduce the quality of what we're asking for in terms of our, uh, values and priorities. But uh, I would give, uh, the team leeway to reduce some of the things that are technical improvements that let's say, uh, eighty percent of the schools don't have anyway. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Looks like we have one more question and then I, if, uh, we could move to a vote, votes after that, that'd be great. Kelly?
Do we know if, um, if they would be, if they would be willing to adjust the, I'm just gonna call it sixty-three-three. Do you know if they would adjust that rate at all to get to the same end number? But like maybe change the percentages. So it's like, we don't have like a sixty percent hit the first year and then three percent, three percent. Do you know if they would be willing to do that?
No, that's not a conversation we've had.
Okay.
It, it, correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, I think you said that can't be, um,
You can't, you can't do that until you find the end nine. I was just- You can't, you can't do that until you find the end nine. I was just curious if you've ever heard of them doing that, like in the past, like with other companies, like with other districts or not, if, if that was something that anybody's heard of. That's, that's more of line. Cause I, I know we can't do it without growing, agreeing on the end, but, that bottom line. But I just didn't know if it was a possibility of something like that. So. Um, do you want me to call Northborough's vote first?
Yep, roll call vote.
I'll call Northborough. Uh, Bryce? Um, so you're in favor of rejecting all bids? Correct?
That's what the frame was. Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Joan?
Yes.
Lauren? Yes. And I believe Kristen's not here and I am a yes. So it passes to reject all bids from Northborough.
Uh, Southborough was second to make the motion, so Chelsea, I'll let you.
Okay. Um, Roger?
Well, I, I mean, it's over, right? But uh, I'll vote yes to reject.
Kamali?
Yeah.
And I am a yes. So passes three zero.
Uh, Region, again, a roll call vote. Um, is Chris Covino on here?
He is not.
Okay, sorry. Uh, okay, then we go to Joan?
Yes.
Yes, Paul?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Yes, and I am a yes. So the vote passes. So um, as a result, the three committees have not accepted, they've rejected um, all bids. And uh, Greg, do you have enough direction and information to move forward?
Yeah, I just want to thank Becky and Keith for their hard work getting to this point. So.
I'd like to echo that. I'm sure this has been a lot of work.
I agree. I feel bad having to send you guys back out, but I just feel like we need to do better.
Greg, I just want to check the union, superintendency union, do they need to vote on this? Okay. Okay, so um, unless there are any other questions, I think we need motions to adjourn.
So I'll move for Southborough.
Hey, one, point of order. Sean?
Thank you.
Sean?
Yes, Joan?
Uh, on the agenda, it said after next steps is for, you have another public comment.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone in the public? There are two people there that have a comment on this topic. Going once, going twice. Now I will take motions to adjourn.
Shall I do it again? To adjourn for Southborough?
Second.
Does Southborough want to just vote then?
Sure. Roger?
Aye.
Kamali?
Yes.
And Chelsea's eye at eight oh seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion for Northborough to adjourn.
Sounds like Joan's got her and Bryce's got a second. How about that?
Perfect.
Uh, Bryce?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Lauren? Yes. And myself is a yes. Northborough's adjourned at eight oh seven.
The district?
I move for Region.
Kathleen?
Second.
And Paul for the, okay. Uh, so Joan?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So we also adjourned at eight oh seven or eight oh eight, just turned as I spoke. So uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Take care.